So we'd like to get started because we have a, there's some little time limit we have tonight. But first of all, I'd like to thank everyone for coming. You are very nice to come out tonight. And this is the first ward meeting we've held in Ward 1 here or any of the wards for a little while because of COVID. Prior to COVID, here in Ward 1, we held at least one ward meeting every, every year. But then, of course, we had the pandemic and we had to put those off. We held some virtual meetings. But now, thanks to, thanks to the fact that the pandemic has receded to some extent, we now can meet in person, which is very much a pleasure of mine to be able to do this. So what we typically do is spend, I spend a few minutes just telling you about some of the things that have happened in the city. But mostly, this is for you to put questions to us or make whatever comments you'd like to make about the neighborhood, the city, the ward, whatever you'd like. And then, and we just answer them, and that's the principal reason. And I've always found that I learn a lot from these meetings. Get a very, a much better insight into what people have in terms of their thoughts, their dreams, the direction they'd like this city to go. Now, before we begin, I wanted to introduce you to a few of the public officials who've been nice enough to show up today. Tyler Guvea is the Alderman from Ward 1. Thank you, Tyler. Susan Elberg, Shelley Devine are new, newly represented Ward State with Ward 1 State Reps who have just been sworn in in the last few days. Mike Soucy is a County Commissioner from the city. Matt Sullivan back here is a Community Development Director for the, for the city. And we'll be speaking a little bit about Daniel Webster College because that's one of the issues we wanted to address tonight. So a lot has gone on in the city in recent times, but specific to, specific to this neighborhood, to this ward, there are a few things. First of all, we do have the Daniel Webster College. Now, we don't have a lot of new information to present to you, but I know it's of interest to many people in the neighborhood here. Daniel Webster was, for many years, a nonprofit institution which educated a lot of Nashua people and was a real benefit to the city. Then it was purchased by a profit-making educational institution, ITT. That, that was a publicly traded company. They went bankrupt. And as a result, all of the assets of that company went up for sale at a bankruptcy auction supervised by the bankruptcy court in Indiana. It was sold to the highest bidder out in Indiana. That bidder was a Chinese individual who bid much more than any of the local bidders bid for the project or for the, for the property. We were, of course, rooting for Southern New Hampshire University, and they did put in a bid, but it was, you know, I forget, four or five million. The, the successful bidder bid 12 and 1/2, and since that time, he has owned the property. Now, he's paid taxes, but is not really interested in engaging in conversation with the city regarding the direction that he could go with it. He, and Matt can give you more of the details, but, but basically, the master plan, which we completed last year, took a close look at this and recommended with a lot of public input, a kind of middle, middle-density residential development. Other things that have occurred in the ward, we made some, over the last few years, some improvements at Lincoln Park. The playground was stabilized and the ball fields were improved. The main problem being that it was built on a former landfill and there was settling and other problems. So Public Works undertook that project and I think really, really improved the park quite a bit. There will be some work coming at the, at the Birch Hill School. So you might have noticed that that is one of two open-concept elementary schools that are left in the city, the other being Main Dunstable. And the school department received $16 million from the federal government for the purpose of renovating elementary schools, basically. That $16 million is being matched with $16 million of local money, and that will enable the city to upgrade both of the open-concept schools, Birch Hill and Main Dunstable. The, one big purpose is to improve the HVAC system, which is always very, very expensive, and also to enclose the open-concept areas with classrooms because this is a much safer approach towards education these days with many of the incidents we've seen around the country. Of course, we hope and pray that there will be nothing like that here, but still, in order for us to be safe as possible, the classrooms need to be enclosed and some extra security measures adopted. Other things that I think, you know, have happened, the city, over the last year or so, has received a lot of recognition. First, the second safest city in the United States. This is something we, of course, want to maintain as a very high priority. This is due to many things because there are a number of factors, including the, you know, the crime rate, but that's not the only thing. Our excellent police departments, fire, play a big role, but also the efforts of our healthcare community, our public health department, and just generally, our citizenry, who I think in general keep themselves very healthy and are very law-abiding. So that is an important recognition that we want to continue to maintain. We were reaffirmed for two AAA bond ratings, which is a very rare distinction among municipalities because we have very solid finances. We also received another recognition as being the fourth-best-run city in the United States based upon an analysis of the quality of the services versus the cost. In other words, a very efficient, effective approach towards city services, which is very important to me and to the Board of Aldermen. And we, you know, continue on various surveys to be recognized as one of the best places to live in America. Now, a big challenge, which I know you all have encountered in the last year, has been the state-ordered, state-mandated, state-supervised revaluation. Now, this is something that the city is required by the state to do. It's supervised by the Department of Revenue Administration, and the requirement is that all properties, that the, the reevaluation firm that was hired visioned that all properties be taken to 100% of fair market value. Then property is, then taxes are allocated using those values. The problem that was created by, the, the problem for residential homeowners was that the value of homes since the last revaluation in 2018 rose, on average, 41%. Some less, some more, but on average, 41%. Commercial properties such as malls, industrial properties, you know, office buildings, those did not go up nearly 41%, and in fact, some claim that they even declined in value. For example, the Pheasant Lane Mall, the city's biggest taxpayer, they are claiming that their values actually declined during those four years. So prior to the revaluation, the city was, the homeowners were paying about 65% of the total taxes because homes represented about 65% of the total value of the properties in the city. After the revaluation, homes went up, commercial property really didn't. So after the revaluation, the value, the total value of all homes, based on these assessments, pushed up into the high 60s. And the value, and the, the total value of the commercial properties declined from about 35% down closer to 30%. Therefore, homes now pay, after the revaluation, closer, closer, the high 60s of the tax, the total tax burden instead of 65%. And that caused, on average, home values to, home property taxes to go up. So I know this is a hardship for many people, everyone. No one wants taxes to go up. The city has tried to keep its budget very lean because of this and just in general, to keep taxes as low as we possibly can. Couple of years ago, the city dropped, we actually, I proposed a budget that reduced City Hall's budget by 3% and by cutting some people out. Last year's budget went up about 4, 4%. The previous year was lower. In an environment where inflation was 6, 7, 8, whatever it was, and many of our costs are going up because of it. The Board of Aldermen actually raised my budget a little bit, but of course, reasonable people can always differ as to exactly what the right amount to spend to deliver quality services to the residents, the citizens of Nashua. Now, those are some of the, now, one more thing. If we're watching, we're trying to watch these values closely. If we come upon a period where the value of homes does not go up, but commercial properties do, we can embark on another revaluation to try to equalize the, to try to correct the, the, the result of the last revaluation that was just completed. Now, we do have to, we try to keep these meetings to a little over an hour because we're hoping you come back, maybe we'll hold another meeting. We do have, Tyler and I do have a meeting in City Hall at about 7:30, so we need to leave by 7:15, 7:20. So we want to make sure that we get to everyone's questions. Hopefully, we'll, you know, everyone will have a chance and within the time we're given. So, and we just want people to, if there are disagreements, I don't know, that people remain respectful of each other. And of course, we have, as always, here in Nashua, civil and polite, you know, constructive discourse. So who has questions, comments about anything? Yes?
One question I ask you all the time, which is about the speed limit on the Broad Street Parkway, which I would like to see at 40. And you say it's because of the involvement of the federal government. You can't do anything till, are they, are we finished with them yet?
We are not, so, the, okay, the question is, why is the speed of the, on the Broad Street Parkway 30 miles an hour as opposed to something faster? Because naturally, you drive faster on the Broad Street Parkway. So the Broad Street Parkway was paid for largely, probably 50% if you add it all up, maybe a little more by the federal government. And in order to get that money expended, Federal Highway adopted what is called a Record of Decision, which defines all the details of the project. And one of those things is the speed limit. And the question, are we done with them yet? The answer is no. The question is not, the, the project is not actually closed out. There are still a few loose ends. There's a, there's a dispute with one of the contractors that build the bridge over overages versus late, you know, it's a, it's a complicated construction case, but we think that will get resolved pretty soon. But Jenny is here, Jenny is here. Jim Tollner is the, one of the police commissioners. I introduced some of the public people before, a former Alderman from this ward. Jenny is taking notes, so we will check this out one more time, but that, I think, is the correct, correct answer.
So my other question was a follow-up of the Daniel Webster thing.
Yeah.
How can you make plans for a property when you have no meaningful communication with the owner?
Well, that, the question is how, regarding Daniel Webster, how do we make plans for a property when we don't have any meaningful communications with the owner? Well, the master plan, of course, considers what the, what the master planning group thinks is the best for, for private properties across the city. You know, it should be zoned this, it should be zoned that. So what the master plan really says it should be rezoned is what it should, would require to be a middle-density residential project. Now, why don't we have Matt come on up? Matt is the Community Development Director and was very involved in the master planning process and can probably provide a few more details regarding Daniel Webster.
Thank you, Mayor. For the, for the folks here this evening, my name is Matt Sullivan, the Community Development Division Director for the City of Nashua. Just on, on my behalf, thank you so much for being here. This is a great opportunity to talk to all of you and collect feedback. As the mayor had alluded to, about two years ago, the city embarked on a community-wide master planning process to revision several sections of the community, really comprehensively, and focused, in fact, on the Daniel Webster College site as part of that work back in the 2020, 2021 years. Now, as the mayor alluded to, one of the things that came out of that plan was a revisioning of Daniel Webster College, not in fact as a new institution, a new educational institution, but in fact as a small mixed-use area that was predominantly what we refer to as medium-density housing or medium-density residential. There was a strong community sentiment to maintain the ball fields that are there on the property and a lot of the green space, while still being sensitive to the residential areas that are both to the north and really to the west of the site as it exists today. So the question of how we actually move forward that plan, the mayor is getting to it, and that is, the first step is that we're working on an update to the city's, that's not the most exciting thing, but it's actually the land use code that forms the backbone of how regulations are applied and what uses and what structures are built on properties or not built on properties throughout the city. And so through the land use code, what we'd like to do with the Daniel Webster property is actually take sort of that vision that was created for the Daniel Webster site and actually put it into different dimensions, different uses, that we think the development community or the preservation community might be able to look at and actually execute on. And frankly, what I think we'd like to do is we'd like to give the existing property owner either the opportunity to redevelop the site themselves or to at least invite attention from the other members of the development community to come in and redevelop that property in a way that's compatible with the community vision. Now, I would just add as an interim measure, while we're working on that land use code update over the coming, I would say, two years, we do have some groups in the city, including the Planning Board and the Business Industrial Development Authority, that have started to look at this property and think about other ways that they actually might incentivize redevelopment there. What I can say today is that plans are in the works, and I think there'll be more visioning done to sort of advance the concepts that were in the master plan. But one thing I point out is that there was actually a really interesting pivoting done by the owner of the property during COVID. There were several groups that needed temporary housing in order to remain isolated, and they actually established temporary occupancy in some of the dorms. These are predominantly educational folks. They, they actually established a temporary occupancy in those dorms. So the property is not entirely vacant. There actually are some groups that are staying there really as a response to COVID, but we're working with the landowner actively right now to determine what the long-term plan is. We've heard a lot of need from different nonprofit groups for some component of housing, but we also recognize there needs to be a long-term plan for how that develops, particularly in the context of the neighborhood and the neighborhood understanding what the city is doing here. So I guess the short answer is we're working on a land use code update. The long, the longer-term answer is I think it's going to take quite a while for redevelopment to happen of that property, but it's a, it's a very high priority, I know, of the mayor and certainly, I'm guessing of many of you and of community development staff as well to do that.
Yes, anything about Daniel Webster, maybe a few. Now, before we, Deb Chisholm, Deb is another city person who, she's a river specialist. She, there's a riverfront project going on, a lot of other things, the relicensing of the Mine Falls Dam, and she's very involved, so I just wanted to make sure we recognize her, but yes.
I'm gonna give you this.
Oh, okay. I have two questions about Daniel Webster. Is it being planned for low income?
Do you want me to do that question one at a time?
Yes, I do, yeah.
Absolutely, so that's a great question.
Can I get the mic back?
Yeah, sure. So income is an interesting question, and I think you're referring to low-income housing, right?
Yes.
So income's an interesting question when it comes to housing. And maybe taking kind of a sidestep for a second to answer your question, the city's doing a lot of work around housing right now and housing affordability. I think one thing that I always love about a room like this is I can kind of clarify what we're talking about, and we're talking about affordable housing, if you've heard that term. It's not necessarily low-income housing, it might be middle-income housing, it could be upper-income housing. Affordability is sort of relative to who it's actually affordable to. And so when we talk about low-income housing, we tend to talk about folks making really 60% of the area median income as a family or a household and below. Right now, the city has a policy that requires affordable housing, not low-income housing. And so there's no plan at this point in time to do low-income housing at the Daniel Webster site. However, I tend to believe that if residential is done there on a much broader basis, I think that there might be some, what you might think of as lower-income housing done on the site. But I think it will be part of a mixed-income development where there's higher-income housing, middle-income housing, and lower-income housing, all being developed as part of one comprehensive project. That's sort of the new way that housing is being thought of when it comes to development.
Okay, my second question is, that's gonna, oh, that's gonna make the traffic on Pine Hill Road unbearable because of the influx, I mean, it's not gonna work, right? I mean, it's good that they have a fire department there, but I mean, if you add whatever, 100, 200 homes, it's, it's gonna be a nightmare.
Yeah, that's a, that's a great point. And I think we all, of course, this word, you know that, those intersections well in that area, right? And, and they can be congested particularly in sort of, you know, the commute times and there are other times of the day. So I'm gonna give you a bit of a non-answer in a way, but this is, this is true. If, if a project comes forward, there's going to be a very careful review of how many units are proposed and what the traffic impacts are going to be. And the reason for that is, just as you've said, the road network around Daniel Webster College is constrained in how much volume it can really take. And so it doesn't mean that development can't happen, but what it means is that if development happens, there'll need to be adjustments to the road infrastructure to actually handle those additional units being built. What those adjustments actually look like, what infrastructure improvements might need to happen, I don't know just yet, but I would agree with you that changes will need to be made. The current roads cannot take the additional volume based on what I've seen, and certainly there's at least one to two intersections that could be problematic in that context.
Okay, thank you.
Can I ask a Daniel Webster question?
Yes, go ahead. I'm gonna give you this.
So how can the city plan to develop property that's privately owned? Have there plans to develop my home too?
All right, so, well, the master plan addresses the entire city, and what the master plan recommends, and did everybody hear the question, how can we plan for property we don't own? So the master plan recommends zoning for every, every neighborhood, every property in the city. So your home is, has zoning on it, which says it's residential zoning. We're not developing your property, but we are passing a zoning law which says what can be there. In other words, on your property, you could not develop a tannery. You know, that would be against the zoning law. You couldn't have, you know, a, I'm not sure where you live, sir, but you, you know, you couldn't have an auto, you know, an auto mechanic shop there.
But you've done more than planned zoning for the property. You've talked about the exact, specific type of housing you want to build, you want to have recreational fields, all these things you're planning, but you don't have any access to the property. You don't own it, it's private.
These are things that, these are things that we would prefer, but obviously, we don't control it, you know, it may never happen. So this is just, we're just saying what we think, or the master, this is a master planning group really, and it was citizen-led with Rabbi John from Ward 1 as a member of the, from, as a member of the Steering Committee, what they felt would be best. But that doesn't mean, right now, it's not even zoned that way. So there would really need to be a collaboration with the owner and discussions about how to proceed in order for anything to happen.
So has the owner indicated that he wants to sell?
No.
No.
No. All right, now, have we finished the Daniel Webster stuff, questions?
You keep referring to middle-density residential city. What does that mean in terms of the Daniel Webster property? How many homes are you talking about there?
Yeah, that's a great question. We truly don't know, and a lot of the reason we don't know is, you're familiar with the site, a lot of it is wooded, it has wetlands on it, or it has existing site constraints. And when we come back to things like the recreational fields, if you were to keep those, that also limits the number of housing units that could be built there. What I can say we're not talking about, I guess, in the context of the master plan only, is high-rise apartment-style or multifamily-style housing is what we refer to it as. That's not something that's been contemplated on the site. And I don't think it's something that the land use code is going to zone the site to do. What I'm really talking about is something more like a triplex or a duplex, that level of density, or single-family homes in some configuration that kind of mimic that same level of density out there on the site. But one thing that was clear in the outreach that we did with the community and talking to folks is that they didn't want to expand greatly the development footprint that kind of exists on the site today, if you're familiar with the buildings. They really wanted to operate within that framework for anything that happens long-term. But as to whether it's homes, a traditional house, or whether it's triplexes or a duplex in sort of independent units around the site, that really is left to the zoning code and what it will dictate as part of that process as well.
But you're in a planning process, so what, what tendency is that plan leaning towards right now?
I would say that our contemplation, at least internally, and there's gonna be a community outreach piece to this too, so, you know, conclusions have not been drawn, but our tendency, based on what the master plan said, is to think that it would be something like triplexes, but independent buildings of triplexes on the site, separated with open space. That's what we've heard as part of the master plan, and we could certainly provide that plan to this group as well.
About how many, in order of magnitude, how many?
So again, just speaking to the master plan, we had talked about 200 housing units on the site.
So you thought 600 units.
No, no, I'm sorry. So that's within the, if we're talking about triplexes or duplexes.
So that if there are 200 triplexes, that's 600 units.
No, so, so I'm saying 200 housing units total. I do, I do want to make sure we're not going too far in this conversation, just the sense that this, this master plan is really to give a sense of what the community would like, and so I can hear folks concerned around the room about 200 housing units. There are going to be multiple opportunities for the public to engage on anything that moves forward on the property. What I think we're doing, to this gentleman's question over here, which is a good one, where we don't have site control, the development community is interested in what the city wants to see. When they come to us, they ask what our plan is for a property. And so having some vision or the zoning in place to actually create something that we've agreed to as a community or those who participate in the process is very, very important. Now, can we dictate exactly what form that's built in or exactly what it looks like? Typically, no, that's a longer-term conversation, but we have a sense of what we think this property might look like in the future, but that could change based on new input that we might collect.
And I would like to add that if, for example, if, if, for example, a school came and wanted to locate there, the answer would be sure. But the kind of the underpinning of this is the opinion of the experts in the field that colleges are not expanding, they're not, they're consolidating, they're not expanding. So that there's no realistic, no good chance that a college is gonna want to locate there because no one, no, no universities are expanding. If Rivier said they wanted another campus, great, but no one has come forward with that at all. Yes, sir.
Let me just grab the mic.
Sorry about that.
Thanks.
So I think the question that a lot of us have is, when was this master plan put in place and how long? in place? And how long has it been in place? And what, what took it to, to put that plan together?
The, the exercise took, what, a year to two years?
A year and a half.
Year and a half. Where were, there was an overall steering committee of appointed citizens, of one from every ward. From this ward, it was Rabbi John of Temple Beth Abraham. And then they had multiple public meetings at which input was taken regarding every zone, neighborhood of the city. Particular concentration focus in terms of the public input was Daniel Webster, Amherst Street, downtown, and the South End, places where it seemed like there could be changes. You know, in a single-family residential neighborhood, we're not gonna go in and propose, you know, something different than that because we want neighborhood preservation. Now, as Matt has said, this plan is available and, and on the website. And if any proposal is ever made regarding Daniel Webster College, despite any ideas that are expressed there, we would be, in the master plan, we would be very interested and would really be guided by neighborhood input. I mean, obviously, were there a specific proposal made, there's gonna be more interest, more engagement out here than there, you know, maybe people didn't, you maybe didn't know too much about what was happening with the master plan. But we would want to hear from this neighborhood and others regarding that rather central, important property and what would be good for it.
So this master plan, is this the same exercise as the visioning Nashua that you guys did?
Yes, yes.
During COVID, in which everything was done online, and you got about 2% of all the registered voters to participate in the survey?
I think that there were, I believe, there were a couple of thousand different inputs, but a lot of it was virtual. Now, a master plan is required by state law, but, I mean, it's not required at any particular time. But the exercise was begun pre-COVID, I mean, the whole planning for it and all that. And I, I suppose the decision that we were, had to make was, well, do we wanna proceed with it anyway, or just sort of call it off? But we did go forward with it, and the, the product is available. All right. Yes, ma'am?
I just wanted to say, you know, I think it's the cock before the horse, what's going on with that. But part of the problem with that neighborhood, part of that problem with the neighborhood is that you have to either, to get out to Amherst Street, you either gotta do Sharon Ave, which is improved with the left-hand turn, which when I moved here in 1984, you could do a left-hand turn. But otherwise than that, you have to go all the way up to Hollis. Some map before, I think it showed that you were supposed to be able to eventually go through Blackfoot Drive. I'm sure they don't want it. But that would help if anything gets built there, to have another way to get out to Amherst Street instead of all going Sharon Ave, all having to go out to Exit 6. You know, if there was some
Well, that would be very helpful.
Additional.
Now, I believe, I believe that there is like a temporary fire road through there because that is technically airport property, and there's FAA restrictions and all kinds of things on what can be built. So, you know, we have, of course, listened to you and heard about the traffic concerns. So one thing that was done, now, this goes back a few years, but the jug handle at where Whole Foods is, the Plaza there and all that, that was all improved so you could make left-hand turns. And I, you know, at least a few people from Ward One said it was the best thing the city ever did, you know, improving their quality of life. Sharon Ave, we add, we added a little bit, the left-hand turn lane coming in. So we're trying to make, you know, traffic quality.
I would say if you get 200 houses there, or whatever else, whatever, if there was some way to connect further up on Pine Hill or whatever, out to Amherst Street, that would solve the problem.
Now, I, I would like to emphasize that if, if there's any opportunity to do anything like that, and if a developer, this, with this particular owner or someone else comes in and proposes something, the first place we would come is to this neighborhood. And we'd have a meeting just like this. And if the overall sentiment was, look, you know, we'd have a, we'd have traffic engineers and all this. And if the overall sentiment was, you know, 250 units, 200 is really too much, we think it should be, you know, a little less dense, maybe 100, or, you know, or, I think we'd be guided by that. So we're not, we're just, the, the master planning group was just sort of conceptualizing what could occur there as an alternative to a college which is not likely to be reestablished. Another idea was industrial property, but that to the master planning people didn't seem to be the best alternative. Now, we're a little bit into the meeting. I don't know.
Can we change the subject?
Yes, but can I introduce, I was gonna ask Tyler, our Ward Alderman, if he wanted to add anything. You know, he's been new to city government, and I think has picked up things very quickly, so I appreciate it.
Just first and foremost, thank you for having me, and thank you to the residents of Ward One who showed up tonight. It's been a pleasure to serve you. And I think tonight is really not so much about what I can tell you guys, but hearing what you guys want. And I think it's important, so ask your questions, have them answered, and reach out any time to me, and love the talk. That's probably the best part of this job is getting to talk to all the constituents around and hearing the concerns and seeing what we could do to help. I did want to address the one thing about the Broad Street Parkway with the speed limit. It's actually funny, that was brought up. Just last week, I had a conversation with city, our city engineer, as well as the police chief about the speed limit on the Parkway. The police chief was running numbers, and I should have something rather soon. And then I got some feedback as well from the city engineer. So it's something that's definitely being looked at. And then once I compile all that, I'll run it by the two Ward Aldermen who the Parkway is in as well, and see if it's something that we would like to pursue. But yeah, I just, we get right back to questions here. I think this is great, and just hop back into it. Thank you.
All right. Well, let's try to get to, you know, people who haven't had a question yet. Yes, ma'am?
I would just like to have, just a point, no, it's okay.
Oh, you need to like?
I need it. Sorry. Okay. Just for a point of view about the Parkway. I use it almost every day. And the speed limit's 30. Most people do 40, for the most part. But I, after the first winter, thought, you know, maybe that's not a bad idea for two reasons. There's a lot of twisting, and if the roads are slick, that could be dangerous. Should there be an accident on the Parkway and it backs everything up, there's no way out. You just have to sit there and wait until something gets resolved. So I just thought, well, maybe I'd like it different, but it might be practical also, you know, just from a practical point of view.
All right. Anyone else? Yes, sir?
Quick question on the property taxes. I understand that properties went up, taxes went up. Two years from now, what if our properties declined by 10, 15, 20%? Do we come back and adjust the real estate taxes appropriately? How does that work?
Well, we have, we, in order to do an overall change, we need to do a citywide revaluation. But we, were that set of circumstances to occur, we would, and it would result in a decline of residential taxes, we would do everything we could to undertake a new revaluation. Now, it would need to be in concert with commercial properties which did not go down. If everything went down the same, it would not, the revaluation would not change anything. But were commercial values to maintain or rise while residential values went down, you know, I think we would do everything we can to do a revaluation. We are looking at kind of a more, a different approach, which is to do a revaluation of a portion of the city every year, an annual, taking up a section of the city, say a third, or a half, or a quarter, and to try to keep things more closer to fair market value so that there's not this big gap between the, between the assessed value and the fair market value, whether that's, you know, up or down.
What was the malls' major reason why they said that they're?
COVID, they're losing business.
Empty storefronts and whatnot?
COVID, you know, they got empty, they've got empty anchor stores, you know, less traffic, you know. We get a lot of commercial abatement requests. So many commercial property owners seek lower taxes, and if they don't get what they want, sometimes there's litigation. There was a, you know, there's, there are then trials in front of, valuation trials in front of the, usually the BTLA, the Board of Land Tax Appeals, or the Superior Court. And ultimately, if the parties cannot agree, the city and the, and the commercial property owner, there's a, there's a decision, basically of a court regarding what the assessment should be.
Thank you. Question's the same subject.
Yes, all right. Let's cover the same.
So, so we've all known for several years that the reweighting of the, between the residential and the commercial properties was wrong. You knew that, everybody else knew that. Why didn't you budget accordingly in the last couple of years so that the effect on the homeowners would not be as, as severe, as drastic as it was this year?
Well, we tried, we did, I, I would say, I, I've got the thing here. So we did do that. I mean, in the, in the two, the, the budget two years ago, we, you know, we were very frugal. In City Hall, as I said, we, you know, in City Hall, we reduced the budget and reduced the personnel.
But that's a smart percentage of your total budget.
Well, we still have to deliver fire. We still have to deliver police. We still have to deliver schools. No, wait, can you wait for me to answer? So the, you know, to, let's say we had to reduce things 10%. Well, you wanna do with, you know, instead of 177 officers, when they say we need more, down, go down to 160? Do you wanna close a fire station? Do you wanna close a school? I mean, that's the kind of thing that you would need to, say, reduce the budget by 10%. The budget this year, you know, is about $300 million. So let's say we wanted to cut 10%, 30 million bucks. 30 million, just 10%. The police budget is 35 million. So if we cut, if we cut the police down to 5 million, if we cut them by 85%, we would make it. Fire department, 25 million. So we could cut the fire department up. I mean, I'm, obviously, we wouldn't do this, but I'm just trying to show you the, the magnitude of what you're asking.
So another option might have been to, you had budget surpluses at least the last two years.
Right.
Many millions of dollars. And you chose not to put that towards the tax rate. You chose to spend that. So wouldn't an option to offset the effect of this reassessment have been to use those, those surpluses to offset the tax rate?
Well, it isn't.
So no, no decline in services if you do that?
That is not really completely accurate. All right, so let me illuminate that. So the, there was a surplus, which we knew would result. Four and a half, $4 million of the surplus was applied to the tax rate. But in order to keep the budget down, various things were not, you know, just keep things as tight as possible. There were some big items that needed to be done, which weren't even in the budget. For example, for example, there was no equipment purchases in the budget. And the only way to buy new equipment for the various departments that need it is by using a portion of the surplus. And that was a $3 million item. What am I talking about? Police cruisers, plow trucks, garbage trucks. Now, one of the Aldermen had us look at, well, what, what would happen if we didn't do that? If we didn't, if we put that 3 million, and that was the biggest part of the expenditure, was that 3 million. Because again, $4 million did go to the taxes. What if we didn't buy any equipment? Okay, well, if the police department comes in and says, we can't survive that way. We, we can't go without cruisers.
But, but ma'am, those are things that were not in the original budget.
Correct.
If they were that important, why didn't you budget them?
Because the taxes would have gone higher had we done.
So why didn't you remove the items that were in the original budget that were not needed? Because obviously, they were not needed if you didn't buy them or you didn't
Well, because we, because over the course of time, in order to keep things down, the customary approach, this has happened year after year, is that all of the equipment needed is not budgeted, but is intent, but instead, we, we save money to the end of the year through the surplus process, unexpended revenue. A lot of this is money that we haven't spent. These departments have saved this money. And then, and so it is known at the beginning that instead of budgeting for the equipment, what we're gonna do is we're gonna save money during the year, and we're gonna spend that money at the equipment, on, on equipment at the end.
I don't understand the method of budgeting.
Well, you, it's, these budget committees are open, and we welcome kind of people's knowledge. And there's a Citizens Academy that we hold every year that people can join, and you can learn a lot of details. So it's fun, and, you know, it's very informative. And you would be welcome. Yes?
Just real quick, don't even, Michael, okay. Just, just a quick question. How much taxpayer money went to the Performing Arts Center to finish that project?
Thank you for asking that question, because I think there's a lot of confusion about that. So the total cost of the project, and I've had a cold, and I'm beginning to, is about $25 million. $21 million was public money. Now, that's paid back over, you know, a number of years. So the annual cost of that debt service is about $1 million. But the, there wasn't, there, there was, there is an economic development strategy, a tax-based strategy behind that project, which is already being successful. The point is to, you know, two basic things. Number one, bring more people, tens of thousands of people to the downtown to help strengthen the business base down there. Number two, attract private investment to the downtown, which we have, which we, an under-invested area, the poorest, believe it or not, the, even though Nashua is relatively affluent for a New Hampshire city, downtown is the poorest census district in the state of New Hampshire, downtown Nashua. So attract the private investment down there to improve the neighborhood and to strengthen the tax base. So what has happened? The, you see 150 units of housing going up on schools. Now, that is being built by a Florida builder, and someone who knew nothing about Nashua before he came here, representing $30 to $40 million of private investment in Nashua's downtown. Now, if you look around, when was the last time someone came in and built something from the ground up of that magnitude in Nashua's downtown without government support? Hundred, I mean, I look around, and it's the downtowner in around 1900. There have been conversions of mills, which is great. The loft 34, years ago, clock tower. But those are easier to, to accomplish financially because they get the benefit of something called the Historic District Tax Credit, which is a huge tax incentive that supports the conversion of old historic buildings into housing. This is, the School Street project, a house, from the ground-up housing, that guy, that builder, developer, has said, you know, he wouldn't even have come, he wouldn't even have thought of this but for the Performing Arts Center. Now, that will bring in $350,000 or $400,000 a year. So, and, and, you know, there are some other projects that really will So, and, and, you know, there are some other projects that really will, you know, are likely to happen in the same fashion. So in the end, downtown, like Amherst Street, like the South End, is a profit center in terms of taxes. The Central Business District, a quarter square mile, generates 6 million dollars in taxes. City is 31 square miles, so this is a tiny proportion of the city from an areas point of view. Services very limited, you know, there's no, very few school kids. We don't even pick up garbage down there, it's all commercial. So we provide police protection, we provide fire, we, you know, plow the streets, whatever. And so we don't, we don't, it doesn't cost 6 million dollars to support the downtown in terms of services. If we can grow the tax base down there, so that 6 million becomes 8, becomes 10, it helps every neighborhood in the city. It helps the schools, the police, the fire. So in the long run, the Performing Arts Center helps us build a stronger, healthier national economy, and that was the goal of it. And so far, it seems like it's going to succeed in achieving that goal.
How much have we got so far?
Got.
I mean, income?
Well, the school, the school street housing is going up and will pay, that's supposed to open in 2023, will pay 20, you know, 350, 400,000 dollars a year in taxes. And the outflow, the annual cost of the Performing Arts Center is about a million dollars. So let's say that's offset two-thirds. Now it's 600,000 dollars. That is a quarter of a percent of the tax rate. So for a person who pays, and if we can get more private development, that, you know, that amount, that difference will decline. If we can, you know, the quarter of a percent is, you know, for an average taxpayer, 20 bucks, I don't know, you know, 15, 20 dollars? And we think in the long run, we can, you know, make it profitable in a way. And in addition, the additional people, I mean, not even counting the effect of the additional people who would come downtown, which can support the businesses and then helps raise the value of the buildings that they occupy. So in the end, I mean, I know you're skeptical, but I'm just trying to, this wasn't frivolously decided. It wasn't always, you know, like, this is a, you know, like some, you know, jewelry bling we'd like to buy or something. This, there was, what I want to convince you of is that whether you disagree or agree with it, there was thought that went into this, an economic development strategy behind it, which, you know, we could debate is it successful or not, but it wasn't an attempt to make like just a frivolous, buy a frivolous luxury. Yes, ma'am?
I believe it's on our ward now, near Lita Lanes, where the Rehome Store and the China Buffet went out of business. Is there anything in the works to redevelop that part of Amherst Street?
Well, those businesses, now, Matt, where's Matt? He might be able to answer in more detail, but those businesses, those properties, I believe, are owned by the Law's, the Law Warehouse. And they're kind of looking at a whole lot of things. They'd like to do a more, bigger something there, but I'm not, they don't really know what.
No, the mayor said, well, the Law family has tried to do some larger, sorry, the Law family has started to think beyond the current uses of the properties back there, and started to do, from what I understand, some level of planning for the reuse of those. We really don't have a sense of what that might look like, but the area is actually very flexibly zoned, and so many things really could happen there, from retail out to housing. One of the challenges, interestingly though, is actually the proximity to the airport when it comes to housing. From a soundproofing perspective and just the, the airport activity, it can create significant issues with the development of housing in close proximity. That's something we actually work on fairly consistently as the city, but there's no immediate plan to do anything there. I think you'll see some smaller reuses and changes of uses, but that property owner is thinking about a longer term and larger plan for those, for those areas back there.
Yep. And, you know, the, the Law's did buy, I mean, the Lita is still operating, but, and it could for a long time, but they, but the Law's actually bought the property, so the, the owner leases, basically, I believe, that, that from, the operator leases that from the Law's, basically. Or maybe they made, maybe they didn't buy it, but maybe they made a mortgage loan to the owner, but they have some, some grip on that property. Now that I'm thinking about it, I think they, they made, they made a mortgage loan to the owner rather than buy it. But still, you know, if that were to fail as a business, as a bowling alley, then the Law's would control it. Yes, Bob?
Well, I first commented about the, the Arts Center, looking forward to it. When I was working, I used to work out of Schenectady, New York, and they had a similar situation where they developed an old theater, for lack of a better description, and it revitalized the whole downtown. It was, the transition or the change was, was dramatic. You know, they started building hotels, they built office buildings, and really expanded the area. All, that was, that was the anchor that started it all. So just a, you know, a positive comment on, on the potential.
Thank you. Now, just briefly on downtown, I mean, the, downtowns are changing and evolving. I mean, years ago, these used to be office centers, you know, banks, law firms, you know, and there was all kinds of activity lunchtime. Now, things have changed, and this is true across the country. The number of office workers is greatly diminished. It already started before COVID, but then was accelerated through COVID. So downtowns are evolving into service centers, into, you know, entertainment restaurants. When I go to a U.S. Conference of Mayors meeting or talk with mayors from New Hampshire, they all, every one of them, focused on downtown. And the most important factors in downtown revival, in the evolution of downtowns, are restaurants, artists, art centers, performing arts centers, tech people. And so supporting those, and they can spawn in turn, other development can bring in the people that support retail. So the effort is to make downtown a place where people from Nashville want to live, want to be, want to go down there and walk, would want to go to a business, and thereby enliven the city and strengthen it in all respects.
Now, wanted to ask my question?
Yes.
I was, I was shocked when I saw the, the news this morning. They talked about Manchester, Mayor Craig, and she was talking about how she's overwhelmed by the homeless population and the, the tent cities that are going up, and they seem to be going up all over the country. You know, how are we preparing to prevent that sort of thing? And the other thing is, I noticed, you know, and I think we all notice around Broad Street, around the Nashville Mall, they've got panhandlers seem to be taking up every street corner.
Right. Well, as you've suggested, homelessness is becoming a much, you know, is growing, a much more significant problem than it ever has been before. You know, you've already said it, but you've got to go to California, it's just beyond belief. And Manchester, you know, has like a tent city of 40, 50, 60 tents in the downtown. In our situation, there's an annual homeless count done in the early part of the year or late in the year, and I think.
January 25th.
January 25th. But what we believe now, the count is 48. And that number, you know, accurate or not, but compared to previous years, it used to be like 29 or 30. So the number is definitely up. Obviously, not an easy problem to solve. One, so we, we need to adopt imaginative approaches. It's a very difficult and expensive problem to address. One thing that we are optimistic about in this regard is that the Soup Kitchen and Shelter has successfully, they have rented over the long term, the former St. Patrick's School on Spring Street, they raised $9 million to convert that to a very high-quality homeless shelter that would, that has about 92, 94 beds compared with what they have now, which is about half of that. And in terms of the quality of the place, it's not double, but it's like 10 times what they've got now, which is, you know, very cramped, old, you know, deteriorating couple of structures. So we're, and the city put some money there through home, so-called home funds, as well as a little bit of city money, and so we're hopeful that that will make a big difference. But it won't, you know, solve everything. So we need to, I mean, the, you know, the fire chief, Chief Buxton, who's a very smart guy, very dedicated, Nashville, you know, his whole life, he's saying, you know, we could develop, and this is yesterday, you know, we could develop a outreach group, two firefighters, a police officer, a social worker, which would go out and talk with and engage all of the homeless people in the community. Now, the nonprofits are doing that to some degree already, but, and so I say, well, could we do it with the people we have? Well, no, we need to add a couple firefighters, add a police officer, you know, your taxes go higher. Would that help? Yeah, probably. I think that with the police and fire involved, it would really, you know, that, that kind of, that combination of expertise would be very effective in trying to persuade people to move to housing and all this kind of thing, and finding housing and locating specific problems, but it would cost money. It's something we have to think about. Tyler's here, he's an alderman, I don't know what he thinks, but is it, is it, is it worth the expenditure? Maybe. I mean, I couldn't say yes to him because, you know, we're trying to keep the budget down. Do we need to add two firefighters who aren't going to be fighting fires? Maybe, maybe it's, maybe the problem is that severe.
Behind you.
Now, one more point before I hit the box. But the point that Mayor Craig was making is where is the state with this? I mean, generally, you think welfare and all that is a state responsibility. That's true in most states. The state had a $400 million surplus. They got over a billion dollars of federal money. And what the point that Mayor Craig is making is, we've seen nothing. We, Manchester, have seen no help. Where is the money going? Can't you help us with this? I signed her letter. Because we haven't seen much. Where is all this money? This is a critical problem for us. Manchester, it's just, you know, as I said, it's worse. We could use some state help here. And if this, if the governor came down and said, look, if you get the firefighters together, we'll do this, we'll do that, yeah, sure, we'll, we'll work in combination with you. We're not saying we want to spend any money on any of this, but there's already so much on the property taxes. You know, state aid is very limited. This is the highest property tax state, I think, in the United States. You know, we need some help with this. This is a crisis, a public health crisis, a social crisis. We need help. And we're not, we're not getting anything.
Is there a sleeper up here?
Yes.
Two. So Bob, Bob Keating is, now, Bob is very involved with helping many people who are in this situation.
No, I appreciate the, the question. My, my comment was going to be about homelessness, so it was apropos. And first of all, I, I want to appreciate that letter that, that you were involved in, and five or six other, other mayors directly asking for assistance, and that's not the first time you did it. And the last time I saw you, a couple of weeks ago, you were at the memorial service where we honor the people who died in our state. And Manchester had two deaths last week, and, and a woman gave birth to a child in a tent. So it's, it's a continuing issue with us, so I appreciate your, your presence with, with that. And certainly outlining that a city alone cannot answer all of these questions, but there are things that have been done and I think continue to be done. And one of the thoughts I have, and I think of Mr. Sullivan, who did a wonderful job in, in helping work through the creation of a housing trust, and we're waiting for the, for the point in time to get it, you know, funded. And I think I, you know, I don't, I haven't been in touch of, you know, of late about what the process is, but that's one of the ways in which I, I think concretely, that looking at a way to accelerate that process so that we can look at prioritizing the permanent housing that you're speaking about, that the Soup Kitchen has created, because on the top of the, of the shelter will be 11 beds for the people who are most vulnerable. So I, I just appreciate your efforts and your efforts, and that's one concrete way that I think, without touching the tax bases, that we can do something in a relatively quick way with the kinds of funds that we have available without affecting the, the tax rate.
Yes. Now, what Bob is talking about is that the city, Manchester received around 40 million of so-called ARPA funds. We only got 16. I like, why that is differential, I don't really know. But the, the decision we made was to dedicate $10 million of the 16 towards an Affordable Housing Trust Fund to help promote the development of so-called affordable housing, and we are appointing a kind of a steering committee to kind of decide how, to recommend how those funds should be applied. I suppose homelessness is one possibility. Otherwise, you know, subsidizing the development of housing in general, maybe even market rate, but sometimes affordable housing is 80% of area median income. Right now, area median income, that, that's a kind of a metric that's used. It is, for a family of four, average area, median, family income for a family of four is about $100,000. So, you know, 80% of median income for a family of four, $80,000. So, you know, these aren't poor people, they're people who are working very hard, but, you know, struggle even at that income level to pay for a home for, you know, a family of four. Now, we have, Tyler and I have to go downtown. I told, I mentioned to you, we like to try to keep it to an hour. We can, if there are more questions, we can hold another meeting here. Probably people haven't had supper, dinner yet, most people, so how about one or two more questions?
Can I take you back up to the housing?
Yeah.
Thank you, Mayor. So as a past firefighter, past police officer, alderman, now county commissioner, I will say, I don't think throwing extra police or extra fire out there can address the situation. The police are addressing or meeting these people on the street every single day. They do, and, and good ways, often. You really can't put the firefighters out there because there are six fire stations out in the city, and each one is manned, four to an engine, four to a ladder truck. These trucks have got to be ready to roll to their location. It's not about building a house, it's about the addiction issues and the mental health issues. And until we can address the mental health issues and the addiction issues, you're going to have homelessness. You can go to any one of our two hospitals right now into the emergency room, and working in the hospitals myself at one point, typically, it's not untypical to see four or five people in an emergency room with mental health issues who are going to be there for three weeks sometimes because of there are not enough beds. So the issue is not just about homelessness and building a home, it's, we got to address the addiction and the mental health issues, because we talk to these people on the street, but it's very, very difficult. Thank you for the opportunity, Mayor, that's all I have to say.
All right, one more question, how about that? You're pointing over to where? You're pointing over to where? Oh, yes, sir.
A couple of years ago, Sullivan Farm was going to put in a, in a tower, and for some reason, and I was, I'm an abutter, so, and I was looking forward to that tower going up. So my phone was working, for some reason, it got, it got nixed, and I assumed that maybe one of the abutters did, but I hadn't heard. And I'm an abutter, so nobody asked me.
Now, I have to get back, so you're talking about a cell phone tower.
Yeah.
On Sullivan Farm. Now, I, I'm going to have to get back to you on that. If you give Jenny your contact information, we can find out what the plans were. What did, and what I know did happen is that because many were concerned about maintaining that as a farm, the last operating farm in the city, as opposed to, you know, a housing development or something, the city worked with a number of agencies, the state, I think the Forest Society?
Conservation and Land.
Conservation and Land Foundation. We put in some conservation, there's a conservation fund, we put in some money, and a combination of these groups purchased an agricultural easement on the property, on most of the property, except for where the house is. What that does is it says, an agricultural easement says that, and the owner is paid for this, but in the future, the property has to be operated for agriculture. It cannot be developed. So what, in essence, all these groups together bought the development rights and have said that from, from now on, it has to remain a farm. So I did not know about the cell tower. I don't know if that would contradict the agricultural easement, it very well might. But if you give Jenny the, your contact information, we can look into that and try to get an answer.
That would be nice.
Now, Tyler and I do have to get there, so I want to thank you all for coming very, very much.
Thank you.
It's been a really interesting discussion. If you feel that another meeting would be helpful, we're glad to do it. We just don't want to tax your patience too much, so, anyway, I appreciate your coming out and giving us your thoughts and ideas.
Thank you.
All right? Thank you.